I'm Amanda Fancy, I'm the dealer-owner of Gals Home Hardware and Furniture. We've been at this location for about a year. We started in 1848, way back when. This is our fifth location, so we've never have left the town limits. So we're looking to build this location. We had lots of opportunity to potentially look at outside of the town limits, but it was really key for us to be and continue to be a growing business in Bridgewater. Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is unique. We have a beautiful countryside. Our town is 7,500 people, but then our customer reach is about 45,000. So we're talking about lots of small communities, hidden treasures. There's huge opportunity here, and I think that it's certainly worthwhile to make the visit, make the call, do some inquiry, because it certainly is somewhere where I think there'd be some strong investment opportunities, for sure.
My name is Joey Richard. I come from Quebec, Montreal. I've studied opera, the Montreal Orchestra of Music, so this is where I've learned about Italian, the language, and the food. And my passion just became bigger and bigger for food. I've been cooking for 20 years, almost. I opened a family business, but the only thing I forgot is that my family is still in Montreal, so I'm like, you know, I'm trying, I make new friends, I'm building this thing, but it is a family business here. My chef is like my brother, his wife is like my sister, so I mean, I recreated a family environment. We do the real recipes, starting from the real ingredients. And for Italian food, what the secret is, few ingredients and very fresh. So each recipe would be like three, four ingredients, maximum, but I mean, it's just the best ingredients and makes it so delicious. If you think that it's impossible to have your own business, I'm the living proof that it is possible. People want us to thrive. We work together. So everybody helps each other. If you want to be part of a community, it is the community to be part of.
My name is Joel Holland. I'm the owner and operator of Nanotwo Athletics. I found the opportunity, started this gym in my parents' garage, and now we are currently in an 8,600 square foot facility. A lot of people come here because of the community. The things that we offer here are different than a normal gym. It's an open atmosphere where you come in, the music's played over the loudspeakers, not in your ears, you don't put earbuds in, and just walk around from one machine to the other. You focus on yourself, but at the same time, you get to meet new people. We have three floors, which we do CrossFit, bootcamps, athletic training, and personal training. We have so many other businesses that are growing our economy and feeding into it becoming more populated, a place where people actually stay as opposed to leave. We're growing. We're getting bigger, and a lot of people are on the same push to become a better Bridgewater. I love this place. It's my home, and there is no other place that I want, would want my business to be.
Test one, test two.
I'm Amanda Fancy, I'm the dealer-owner of Gals Home Hardware and Furniture. We've been at this location for about a year. We started in 1848, way back when. This is our fifth location, so we've never have left the town limits. So we're looking to build this location. We had lots of opportunity to potentially look at outside of the town limits, but it was really key for us to be and continue to be a growing business in Bridgewater. Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is unique. We have a beautiful countryside. Our town is 7,500 people, but then our customer reach is about 45,000. So we're talking about lots of small communities, hidden treasures. There's huge opportunity here, and I think that it's certainly worthwhile to make the visit, make the call, do some inquiry, because it certainly is somewhere where I think there'd be some strong investment opportunities, for sure.
My name is Joey Richard. I come from Quebec, Montreal. I've studied opera, the Montreal Orchestra of Music, so this is where I've learned about Italian, the language, and the food. And my passion just became bigger and bigger for food. I've been cooking for 20 years, almost. I opened a family business, but the only thing I forgot is that my family is still in Montreal, so I'm like, you know, I'm trying, I make new friends, I'm building this thing, but it is a family business here. My chef is like my brother, his wife is like my sister, so I mean, I recreated a family environment. We do the real recipes, starting from the real ingredients. And for Italian food, what the secret is, few ingredients and very fresh. So each recipe would be like three, four ingredients, maximum, but I mean, it's just the best ingredients and makes it so delicious. If you think that it's impossible to have your own business, I'm the living proof that it is possible. People want us to thrive. We work together. So everybody helps each other. If you want to be part of a community, it is the community to be part of.
My name is Joel Holland. I'm the owner and operator of Nanotwo Athletics. I found the opportunity, started this gym in my parents' garage, and now we are currently in an 8,600 square foot facility. A lot of people come here because of the community. The things that we offer here are different than a normal gym. It's an open atmosphere where you come in, the music's played over the loudspeakers, not in your ears.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'll call this regularly scheduled meeting of Bridgewater Town Council to order, and as always, the town of Bridgewater is located in Mi'kmaqie, the unceded and ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people, and it is our privilege to be here. Agenda has been circulated. Any additions or deletions? Hearing none. Have a motion to approve the agenda circulated. Council planner, seconded by Deputy Mayor Fugier. All those in favor? Motion is carried, and we are down to announcements. And I know that our Economic Development Officer, Director, Officer, Donna, without her lobster clause, is here to talk about an event happening on the 21st, important event.
Exactly. Thank you so much for having the opportunity to come before you today. It's with pride, but at the same time remorse that we have to come together to talk about the need for housing in our community, and knowing full well that there are many initiatives afoot right now between developers who are creating homes and houses. We're also addressing affordable housing and looking at housing affordability. But last fall, we learned about a couple of programs that became available through the province of Nova Scotia. Happy Pad is a home sharing program that is being supported by Municipal Affairs and Housing, and it is part of a two-year program where they encourage homeowners who have additional bedrooms that are unoccupied in their homes to rent them out, ideal potentially for seniors or new homeowners or homeowners in the existing capacity that would like to help grow the number of housing units available within our community more immediately. So that was a program we became familiar with. It is from B.C., but now available in Nova Scotia. Secondly, the province announced the secondary and backyard housing grant, which was, is, and still is, a $25,000 grant representing up to 50% of costs to create an apartment or a secondary home unit on your property of your existing. Both cases are meant to help address some of the housing inventory crisis and move things forward. What we realized very swiftly is that these programs are meant for our residents, our homeowners in the Bridgewater area, but also the surrounding area. But folks may not be learning about them because the announcements are made, but does it really hit the ground in enabling folks to learn about it? So we got together with several of our colleagues. There is now a collection of folks who have come together, and I don't want to miss anyone, but we have certainly highlighted them. The poster is here. We're having a community information meeting on March 21st at the Baptist Church. We are ready for a couple hundred people, and I'll be delighted if we can achieve that target. But specifically, the collection of organizations who have come together include not only ourselves, but we brought forward and collaborated with the municipality of the District of Lunenburg, the Bridgewater and Area Chamber of Commerce, the Lunenburg United Way, our senior safety coordinator, Energize Bridgewater, the Nova Scotia Community College, South Shore Housing Action Coalition, South Shore Health, Michelin, and many more, including Municipal Affairs and Housing, who are the proponents of these projects or these programs. So we will be getting together. It's open to all to attend, from 6:00 to 7:30. It would likely a little bit overflow towards the 8:00 p.m. But really, the intent of the session is empower our community members to become aware of these programs, whether it be for themselves and the home that they own, or because they have a family member or a friend whom they know might benefit from having someone home share with them. These are programs that often will happen regardless in university towns. I'm thinking of Sacville, New Brunswick, et cetera. Folks may not think that we do that around here, but in fact, NSCC, our International Student Exchange Program, all these things have been happening. We might not just have looked at it as a lens for looking at affordable housing and looking at housing affordability. So I have shared with each of you a promotional poster. Folks can find it online under our Facebook page as an event. Many of us are circulating the details and sharing it throughout all of our networks. You'll begin hearing a bit more of it in the upcoming issues of the South Shore Breaker, on CKBW and Hank, on the radio stations, as well as in Lighthouse Now, with companion articles that the media have been very kind in supporting us in communicating the event. So I know that each of you will help us share that. It's certainly housing is a concern for our council, and certainly our staff, and we're working towards at least finding some in-between triage times as we move into the new housing units that are becoming available.
Any questions of Donna?
Terrific. Thank you for your support and assistance.
Thank you. Just a couple announcements from me. So today, we had a pretty exciting announcement. Up at Pineview Manor, so attached to Hillside Pines, the province announced more details on a public housing build. So that's 21 public housing units, the first public housing to be built in the province in over 30 years, which is a pretty sad thing to say, but the good news is it's happening. Their construction, they're hoping for spring 2025 to start with a completion by the fall of 2026. It'll be a modular build, so if you can think of that property, if you're standing facing Hillside Pines, think of the land kind of between the police station and the end of that Hillside Pines building, and then going back a little bit. So that's town-owned land, but we're working with the province on that. And 21 units, I think they said it could, it's one, two, and three-bedroom units, again, public housing. It's owned and operated by the province, and it could house up to 92 people, they said, which is great. One of the alarming statistics that they shared today was there are 200 people in Bridgewater waiting for public housing, and there are over 2,000 people in the western zone waiting for public housing. So yeah, that's a lot. But like I said, when you build public housing for 30 years, then that list is going to grow. So I'm pleased that the province chose our community, but also that they're moving as quickly as possible. So this was a very good news story for our community today. The other was, I just want to offer a congratulations to Rita at Michelin and her team for the inaugural International Women's Day event that they hosted at the Michelin Social Club on Friday. I certainly didn't know what to expect, but it was packed. It was packed, and it was fantastic. I don't know what their expectations were, but I'm sure it exceeded their expectations because it was engaging, and people were talking, meeting people they'd never met before on Pat. They can leave a comment with their event on that post, and they should make sure that if it changes or it needs to be updated, that they also update it with a new comment. But cool feature that's being well used. Okay, we will move along. The next item on our agenda is delegations. So I know there is a planning item that we have people speaking at. We have, obviously, staff will speak. We have an appellant and an applicant. What I'm looking for now, are there any other members of the public that wish to speak on any topics? Now is your time. Not seeing anyone move, so we'll move down to, we have the minutes of February 12th, regular council meeting, and February 26th, regular council meeting. Any errors or omissions with those? Hearing none. Motion to approve the minutes circulated. Council Thurburn, seconded by Deputy Mayor Fugier. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Now, we are going to planning, and so we have an appeal for 33 and 35 York Street Site Plan Approval. So how this is going to go is staff are going to speak to this, then I will ask the appellant if they wish to come and say a few words, and then I will ask the applicant. I'm trying to get everything straight. Don't know why we named two things so close. As long as everyone's got that straight, so it'll be staff, then the appellant, then the applicant speaking. And just remind folks to be respectful and direct their remarks and questions to council. And I will turn it over to Mr. Brown.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So staff received an application for site plan approval on behalf of Sweeney's Funeral Home at 35 York Street on August 15th, 2023. The subject zone, the restricted commercial C6 zone, necessitates the site plan approval process for any addition to buildings exceeding 15% of the existing gross floor area. The proposed addition is 2,575 square feet. The existing floor area of the main structure currently equals 5,122 square feet, so that represents an addition of approximately 50% of the existing gross floor area. Upon review of the submitted site plan, the application was deemed to be compliant with the criteria for site plan approval in commercial zones, except for two criteria which require review by the town's engineering department. So those are the grading or alteration in elevation or contour of the land shall minimize undue erosion and/or sedimentation, and other negative impacts on neighboring properties, and the management of storm and surface water is addressed and associated plans are approved by the town engineer. Staff received a drainage report and associated grading plan on November 14th, 2023, prepared by a professional engineer. Subsequent revision was needed based on review by town staff, resulting in a final drainage plan with revisions made to January 3rd, 2024. The final revised report and associated stormwater management plan and grading plan was submitted on January 12th and approved by the town engineer. As such, those criteria were deemed to be satisfied, and together with the approved site plan demonstrating compliance with all other applicable criteria, as development officer, I granted site plan approval on January 15th. As part of the procedure as set forth by the municipal government act, property owners within 100 feet of the subject property are sent a letter, and those recipients may appeal the granted site plan approval within 14 days after receiving notice. An appeal was filed on February 2nd, which brings us to this evening, where council, upon hearing the appeal, can make any decision that the development officer could have made. Now, the appeal itself concerns three criteria. Existing vegetation shall be retained where the vegetation is healthy and helps to minimize negative impacts on the surrounding neighborhood. With respect to that, the grant of site plan approval requires a letter of undertaking as an instrument to ensure compliance of the site plan criteria. With criteria written as a determinative statement, vegetation shall be retained, the letter of undertaking includes the statement and therefore holds the applicant to compliance. As such, this criterion was deemed to be satisfied. The other two concerns relate to the grading plan and the stormwater management plan. As mentioned, those were reviewed, revised by the design engineer, and approved by the town engineer, thus granted site plan approval. Subsequent to the approved plans and subsequent to the appeal, staff decided to seek a second opinion from an engineering consultant in preparation for this appeal hearing. The third-party professional engineer stated in response, and I'll paraphrase, "Based on review, we recommend refusal of the application because additional information is required to confirm that the proposed meets with the town's requirements." As this opinion was received after the granted site plan approval, the external review becomes additional information for council's consideration this evening. So that'll be it for me for now. Or do you want to say anything else? Or, do you want to say anything else?
You can go. Actually, I'm sorry. So, I'll leave it at that for now and be available for questions afterwards.
Questions from?
Or, questions now.
Well, let's kind of do it piece by piece, I think. Any questions of Nick at this point? We may circle back.
Counsel Thorburn. So, there's no problem with the vegetation saving as much as we can? You say that item number one is okay? So, we're just dealing with grade plan?
Well, that's my opinion. So, that was the review of the site plan criteria, and where it states that existing vegetation shall be retained, that would help minimize negative impacts. As mentioned, that would be included in the letter of undertaking. And so, staff do not have any concern with respect to the buffering between the two properties and that vegetation.
They can't wouldn't clear cut that like some people have done in the past?
Not after they sign a letter of undertaking.
Okay, great.
But currently, there's no grading bylaw in town or other provision that would allow the town to get involved at that stage prior to the permitting process. And then, this letter of undertaking with site plan approval would solidify that as well.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions? If not, well, we can circle back to staff after. Okay, perfect. So, I'll ask the appellant if they wish to come and speak to council.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. May I sit, or am I required to stand?
No, you can sit. That's fine. If you could just also introduce yourself for council.
Well, I have that as part of my little speech here, so I'll get right to it. First of all, good evening, Mayor and Council. I am here tonight to request that council reverse the decision by staff and deny the application for site plan approval for the redevelopment of 35 York Street. The decision by staff was made, in my opinion, without their having sufficient information, and some of that information should have been provided by the applicant, but wasn't. And secondly, the decision was made without the necessary scrutiny and input from the community, the community that would most be affected by the redevelopment. And the community matters. So, my name's James McCarrick. I am a new resident to the town of Bridgewater, although I have very long ties to this overall area. I like to tell people genetically, I've been here for 271 years, but that's not important. What is important is that I am, in addition to being a member of this community, also currently licensed as a professional engineer within the province of Ontario, and recognized as having expertise at providing municipal planning and guidance to municipalities across Canada, planning in the form of municipal master plans for operations infrastructure. So, reviewing site plans, such as what I've reviewed for this redevelopment project, is something I do a lot. Therefore, I hope to be recognized by council tonight as being able to offer important opinions. Having reviewed the drainage report showing the proposed redevelopment of the site at 35 York Street, I have two concerns, either of which should, in my opinion, be justification for council to deny the application. Concern number one, the application has requested permission from the town to develop land that appears on at least two surveys, which are very, very similar to one another, to be owned by somebody else, one of the adjacent property owners, who is actually here tonight sort of as part of my team over here, Barry. It appears that the proposed redevelopment is encroaching on his land by as much as 13 Unfortunately, the town may also be facing another problem because the applicant would appear to have already demolished two small buildings that are on somebody else's land, and to my knowledge, without a demolition permit. When I asked town staff to confirm the actual location of the property line in question, I was told, and I quote, "I cannot confirm the actual location of the property line in question," end of quote. So, staff did not have the information needed to fully vet this application. I hope we all agree here tonight that the town does not have the authority to approve the applicant's request to redevelop somebody else's land. This would certainly ensnare the town in needless litigation, and I'm sure a request for costs on a full indemnity basis. My second concern, any decisions made by staff or council should be able to withstand scrutiny by the community. As I said earlier, the community matters. With this in mind, as a member of the community, I engaged staff and the applicant's engineer, or at least one of them, seven weeks ago to receive detailed information about the proposed redevelopment, so that I could review the calculations and confirm to myself that the design satisfied the town's criteria for development in a commercial zone. However, staff informed me that they were not at liberty to share the information, and the owner's engineer, who I reached out to via email, ignored my email. I interpreted this as a red flag. Only because of the Freedom of Information Act was I able to actually eventually gain some of the information I was looking for, the engineering report for grading and drainage. And having now reviewed that report, I am concerned that the proposed redevelopment plan does not do at least two things. First, it seems to fail to recognize the flooding problem that is being contributed to by the overland stormwater runoff being directed from their property to that of their neighbors, which includes me and Barry over here. And, in my opinion, it does not adequately satisfy the town's site plan criteria for development in commercial zones. As we all know, no application for site plan approval shall be issued for development that is inconsistent with these criteria. More specifically, the plan, in addition to developing part of somebody else's land, falls short of answering the questions I have with regards to three criteria. First of all, describing in detail, because details matter, and if they're not written down, don't expect anyone to comply with them. So, there are no details about how the existing trees, vegetation, and associated root structure on the neighbor's property, yet alone their property, will be protected during construction. And I've seen lots of construction projects, and I've seen lots of backhoes and graders accidentally bump into trees. Now, maybe not so accidentally. These trees are vital to protect the soil from eroding and to help minimize the flooding. Secondly, in terms of evaluating the impact of changes to the grading or contour of the rear property and landscaping to determine the impact on, once again, soil erosion and flooding of the neighboring properties. And lastly, calculating the required size and placement of the proposed in-ground retention tank to help manage the peak discharge of overland stormwater runoff onto the neighboring properties and increasing the incidence of flooding. All of these issues are extremely important because the overland flow of stormwater runoff from the applicant's property, including a very large paved parking lot, is contributing to the flooding of the brook, which is on Barry's property, and of our properties in general. And this will only get worse as climate change results in more extreme weather events in the coming years. But tonight is not the night to redesign the applicant's drain and grading plan. Therefore, because, you know, nothing was done during the last seven weeks to involve the community, I am asking that council do three things tonight. First, deny the application for site plan approval for the redevelopment of 35 York Street. Secondly, request the applicant and/or his engineers to meet with me and any other affected neighbors to discuss our concerns and to modify the design so that it reflects, first of all, the actual property lines, and fully satisfies the town's criteria before submitting a new application for site plan approval for the redevelopment of their property. As I said earlier, neighbors matter. We should have been a welcome part of the design process from the beginning. As I said earlier, I was ignored. That's why I appeared to matter. And third, and I don't know if this is the place to actually ask this, but I'll ask it anyways, I believe that council should be asking staff to modify the town's site plan criteria for development in commercial zones to include a requirement that is already recognized as being important by the province in similar situations. That is that there should be written agreement by the neighbor when an applicant's proposed overland stormwater discharge would be directed at the neighbor's lands. Allowing stormwater to flow onto a neighbor's property allows for the mentality of out of sight, out of mind. And that appears to be the case here. The applicant is quite happy to let all of the stormwater from his paved parking lot, his building, and his driveways and paved areas to flow off-site and onto Barry's property, flooding it, and then onto my property and flooding it. That should not be considered acceptable in a town like Bridgewater.
Thank you. Counsel have any questions at this time? Counsel McDonald?
Just wanted to clarify, make sure I understand, are these two properties flooding now?
Yes.
Or are you concerned that they will in the future?
Well, they're flooding now, and I don't believe that the, well, I believe that the development changes to 35 York Street will just make things worse. And certainly, the changes won't be able to satisfy the worsening climate change impacts as well. So, you know, again, right now is not the time to try to redesign everything here or figure out what the detailed problems are. I'm asking council to allow members of the community, including me, to go back with the applicant's engineers and talk about this, the way we should have been seven weeks ago, and to ensure that we can come up with a design that will meet everyone's needs, including trying to prevent things from getting worse on our properties. You know, I moved into this house last summer, and I didn't realize it when I bought it, but about a third of the rear of the property, and I have a very large lot, I can't even walk on it during the summer without sinking about four inches, five inches, because the water's just, or the grass is completely saturated from the continuous overflowing of the brook. And when I say brook, you should all be able to visualize that this is probably a man-made ditch, maybe 100 years ago, that is about a foot deep and about one and a half feet in width. So, we're not talking about a massive volume capable of absorbing a lot of overland stormwater. We're talking about a small, little ditch, not much bigger than, in fact, not even big, as big as typical conduits for municipal infrastructure today. So, it's constantly overflowing every time it rains, and that's going to get worse.
Other questions at this time?
I guess I have a question about property ownership, and how is that verified for one, and perhaps two, what is the town's role in, if it were, I guess?
Yeah, I think staff can probably maybe come up to speak to some of this.
Yes, although I could simply say, I have brought a survey that was given to me when I bought my house last spring, and it clearly shows that there's a major overlap between this and what I guess the applicant is claiming is their property. And so, my point simply is, knowing that there is this survey that says Barry owns this property, not the applicant, it would not be wise for the town to give approval to the applicant to start redeveloping on land that is, you know, clearly not owned by the applicant.
Nick?
Yes, thanks. So, when an application is received, the development officer has opportunity to seek clarification on property boundaries by getting a survey, for asking for a survey as part of that application. Nothing about this application suggested to me that that was necessary. The building addition, whether the property line, so I did speak to the appellant about this and did provide some information, it's difficult because there are deeds in this part of town especially that are old, surveys and retracement plans that are also very old, and it comes up from time to time that there are some discrepancies, and those are fixed through a new legal survey or retracement plan. Based on the monument infrastructure today, that's easier than in past years. So, staff did not see the need to require a licensed surveyor to get involved, and that cost would have been to the applicant. And the building addition itself, and that's news to me that there would be an encroachment of that size, and so I'm a little confused by that because the building addition itself, whether the property line is angled towards 70 Duffer Street or is squared up to York Street, and I think that's the discrepancy that we're talking about because I did review the retracement plan for 74 Duffer Street. The building addition is still, I'm going to say, and I wish I had the information in front of me, but I'm going to say a good 10 meters, if not more, from the property line that is suggested to be closer to the building, to the existing building in question. So, in all, staff didn't see the need to get a survey done with respect to this application. It is at our discretion, but there wasn't a concern at the time of the application.
So, Nick, just based on that, and not, that's new information that wasn't contained in the appeal notice that was received by the town? So, is there the possibility that we may have to investigate the line and just, or have it confirmed, or do you feel like confident?
I am very confident that the building addition isn't anywhere close to the property line. That's my opinion. I'm confident that that's the case. I know these properties.
May I make a quick comment? It would be less than 15 seconds, and that is that the issue for me is not whether the building addition is on the applicant's property, it's the fact that the grading and drainage plan and the whole response to the town's criteria for stormwater management is all affected by this, including the size of the lot, does the grading. So, if there's a major portion of the site plan that's in question and not part, should not be part of the development, then this drainage plan and everything has to be redone. And so, I think it's prudent upon council And so I think it's prudent upon council to say, cease, desist, go back, do your homework, figure out what's right, what's wrong about the property lines, and resubmit. And let's look at accurate information. Let's not be guessing.
This is frustrating because it's new. So this is the first time council's hearing of any of this happening near the property line.
I mean, certainly, we still have the other, the applicant who would want to speak to this.
Yes, absolutely.
But council can certainly, if you feel that there's information that you need to have confirmed prior to making the decision, in light of this information, and again, if we would have had that in advance, we would have been able to at least advise council appropriately. So you do have the ability to defer if you feel you need that confirmation, and that would be deferred until the next meeting, but say there's the applicant as well.
Yeah, we still want to hear from the applicant. Council McDonald, do you have a question?
Thank you.
Okay.
One more.
Yes.
James, if I can use your first name. Did you, so you attempted to reach out to the engineering firm, did you also reach out to the applicant themselves, or how did that transpire, I guess?
No, I responded first to the letter that was circulated by Nick Brown.
Right.
And asked him for a lot of information. He said, because of confidentiality, he couldn't provide much, but it was, I think it was recommended by him that I also talk to the town engineer, and somehow between the two of them, they recommended I talk to the engineer for the applicant who was responsible for the whole stormwater part, sent that person an email, and I heard crickets.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll now hear from the applicant. We may ask for further clarification on some questions that we have, but. Good evening, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself, that'd be great.
Adam Typer, president and owner of CF Sweeney's Funeral Home. Did you wish to start with questions first?
No, you go ahead with whatever you have.
Good evening, your worship, Deputy Mayor Fugier and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to present to council this evening in respect to the site approval and the building permit for Sweeney's Funeral Home. When I purchased the funeral home from the Sweenes in 2015, there posed a few small issues with the transition. That was the fact that the company did not own the properties on Phoenix Street, which are owned by the Sweeney family, and I'm referring to 47 and 51. They were not part of the company for me to purchase. The Sweenes allowed me a 10-year lease for the use, the continuation of the use of their property on Phoenix Street, which accommodated vehicle storage, general storage, and a body preparation facility. This agreement expires on April 30, 2025. I began this building project with my designing team early in 2022, with the thought that by the end of '23, I would be completed, I would be vacating the properties on Phoenix Street, returning them back to the Sweeney family, and having full operations of the business under one roof, all within my timeline. This process has been slow and arduous. Although I am respectful of the processes and procedures, I do expect them to be followed legally and ethically by all parties involved, and it's been nothing short of frustrating. To further complicate matters, it's disappointing that a complainant can further frustrate me and the employees of this town by attempting to undermine their professional capabilities and duties, as well as disrespecting the professional engineer to which I have hired to design and implement the stormwater management plan that was submitted and approved by your town engineer. Mr. McRoch have obtained a copy of the stormwater plan for his own personal review and opinion, and to use as an arguing point is completely disrespectful, unlawful, and unprofessional. After discussions with the Association of Professional Engineers of Nova Scotia, Mr. McRoch is not a registered engineer in this province. They have indicated that his opinion is biased, reckless, and speculative, and is in a conflict of interest, given he is rendering his professional opinion in a jurisdiction that he's not licensed for the best interest of his own personal property. They have suggested that any professional opinion of this individual should not be considered throughout this hearing. I am further frustrated with the fact that the engineering department felt it was necessary only after the complainant's appeal to seek a third-party opinion of the water plan that was already approved by your engineer. I am further convinced that it was Mr. McCarick's engineering background that intimidated the engineering department to seek the second opinion. After further discussion I had with the Association of Engineers, I was informed that I, as the owner of the plan, and William Richards, the designing engineer, were to be notified that a second opinion was being sought after and approval given for such a review. None of this has happened. I only became aware of the second opinion after I accessed the documents for tonight's hearing just this past weekend, and then requested them to be sent to me, of which I received only at 4:30 this afternoon. There was no prior notice given to either of us, me or my engineer, about design point being engaged by the town for a secondary review, as indicated in the bylaws of the Nova Scotia Association of Professional Engineers, let alone failing to share those conclusions with us in advance of this hearing until my request today to do so, conclusions which had been received by this town the end of February. Having said this, we should also not surprise ourselves that the complainant has launched these proceedings since it seems to be his usual practice. A quick search on the internet, we find it riddled with news articles and submissions where Mr. McCarick is continuous in creating havoc and hardship for homeowners, property owners, and respective municipalities who are attempting to move forward with their respective projects by injecting his own opinions and arguments. My opinion is that he seems to thrive on creating obstacles and difficulties for other, and is most happy when he succeeds. Regardless of the complainant's statements, neither myself or my neighbors, and I have one here this evening that can back that up, have ever witnessed the brook that divides our properties to have breached or flooded any of the properties, even in the fiercest storm. I'm going to add that I had a conversation with the chiropractor on the corner at Duffer Street, in which the said brook kind of disappears underneath a little walking bridge on his front lawn, and during the fiercest storm that we had last spring, he said that the water never breached that brook, and he never had water in his basement. He said we had no flooding. So Mr. McCarick's accusations are false. If he's displeased with the poor drainage on his own property, he may want to look at the properties on Churchill Street, which are all upgrade from him. Respected members of this council, it's at this time that I ask that you kindly disregard any professional opinion of the complainant or the second opinion of the stormwater plan as a result of not following the professional protocol outlined by the Nova Scotia Association of Engineers, and that you keep foremost in your mind that my stormwater management plan will only help and aid in the safe and secure dispersal of stormwater accumulated on my property, and that you respect the decision of your own engineers, technicians, and this department, along with the accurate and professional work of Mr. William Richards, my professional engineer licensed in Nova Scotia to work, responsible for the designing of the plan, and permit Sweeney's Funeral Home to move forward for site approval and development of the essential and necessary addition, so I can continue to provide funeral services to this town and the surrounding areas under my own required legislation. I will provide further detail on comments that were made by the complainant. I have a recent survey on file and completed by Berinter surveyors in Bridgewater, and it was the first step of my project. So I have a survey, and everything is perfectly fine. There are no vegetation that plans on being removed during this process. There are no trees, there are no bushes in the said area where the expansion is planning on going. There's a small patch of grass, maybe 20 by 12, it's pretty small, really doesn't do a whole lot but create aggravation on mowing season, to which I will comment, if Mr. McCarick is not able to mow his back lawn because of how wet it is, I'm not quite sure why he has a property management company that mows the lawn continuously about once every two weeks in his backyard, because we hear it, we see it, we've commented on it. I will further state that we properly applied to this town for a demolition permit for the two small buildings that were in the rear, and I can attest to the fact that those buildings are very well on my property. They are the properties of Sweeney's Funeral Home, and they have been used, maintained, and occupied with various necessities of the company, at least since probably about 1960. So there is such thing as squatters rights, if somebody wants to prove to me that those buildings were not on my property, because they were deemed well within my guideline. It was interesting when I was speaking various times with the town, that in the communication that they chose to share with me in regards to the complainant, that it was said that the town expired all communications with the complainant. So to me, it tells me that when somebody has an issue and they're not willing to accept professional decisions made by the members who work for this town and make the decisions for this town, and it was suggested that perhaps you go talk to them, my opinion and my decision at that time was, if the people who know this information inside and out that has to do with the property, the water plan, what am I going to tell them to convince them? I basically felt that it really didn't matter what I was going to say, we were still going to end up here tonight. So here we are.
So you answered one for me, which was, you have an updated survey, so that's...
That was my question. You have the updated survey showing that it's on your property.
Correct.
Great, thank you.
And the survey markers are in place.
Survey marker in place, yeah.
Okay. Council, call.
So the issue you brought up about, maybe staff can clarify, when a second engineering opinion is sought, must applicants be notified? Staff clarify that?
That's a professional association requirement, not a town requirement. So Matt is a member of APINS, and you
I have the extraction here if you want.
You can let Matt answer that question if you want.
Yeah, sure.
He's been in contact with APINS today as well, so.
So, yes, I was speaking with APINS this afternoon, or actually Engineers of Nova Scotia, with respect to the issue of notifying the applicant, the applicant's engineer with respect to the review. That was not done prior to this. I did issue for a second opinion only for the fact that it was, I thought it would be prudent, given that there was going to be this discussion here likely tonight. And so I am seeking clarification on whether, in terms of, it's the municipality has to do the notification or the person performing the review. If I have to change the process that I do, then that's something I'll be looking at.
It's not a requirement, no.
No, it's not a requirement. That's just professional courtesy, in terms of that. So I am seeking clarification on whether that's something I have to do, or do I have to direct the person who I'm seeking second opinion to do, or if that's something we do have to change in our process to say that in anything, in any submission that is given to the town through the development officer or the engineering department, we have to notify any applicant that that's, they're subject to third-party review at any time, depending on staffing resources or lack thereof at this point.
And it doesn't invalidate any opinion or erase that opinion?
No, as I was reminded today, it is good practice to do, and that you should be doing that, so I have to seek a bit more clarification on that matter.
And can you just further clarify the second opinion, what the second opinion was saying?
The second opinion raised a few concerns with respect to just the overall maintenance of the system. Again, the applicant's engineer had referenced that they, there was, it was going to be maintained, to continue to be maintained. They did, they were concerned with the, in terms of the philosophy around the designing of the storms and the intensities in the design storm itself, being that the applicant's engineer did look at the 1 in 5, 1 in 10, 1 in 100, but they were concerned that if it was sized generically with respect to the 1 in 100, there may be some problems with the smaller storms. But they still needed to seek some clarification after the fact. But that wasn't done ahead of this. They provided those notes, and then it would have been provided to their applicant's engineer.
Council Tanner.
Matt, for you, probably. I'm aware of some residents on Churchill in that particular area having flooding in their basements primarily because of these recent rain events last year, and probably, hate to say it, but probably last night. Have we done any investigation from town's perspective in that area, or is that just out of curiosity? Probably not, I assume, but
No, not that I'm aware of in my short time, five years here. We do, the last two years have been extremely difficult when it comes to the weather, so, and yes, we received some complaints with the more recent storms as well, just with the amount of flooding that is experienced within the town limits on private property.
Okay, thank you. I guess my question is, like, at the end of the day, it's, council has to, it might be a Matt question, but we'll see. Sorry, Matt.
Nope.
Sorry, I don't know, I was just going to make you, you don't have to sit there, but you may have to come back.
Yeah, I have another statement, or just a comment I didn't want to make.
Okay. I mean, at the end of the day, council's decision is based on, does post equal pre? That's our standard, right? So it either meets our standard or it doesn't meet our standard. And we rely on engineers to make that determination. None of us are engineers. I know you're not an engineer, and so you rely on your engineer.
Engineer in my own field.
And so I guess at the end of the day, that's what council needs to know, right? The appeal is saying it doesn't meet our standard, the applicant is saying it does meet our standard. We now seem to have varying opinions on whether it post equals pre. And so
At this, you know, upon the first review, and I guess it, you know, newly taking over this position, I'm always more of a prudent man than anybody. So upon review, we saw some clarification back and forth with the applicant and their engineer. At the end of the day, staff do not do an exhaustive review. It states that rating are upfront of our design and construction standards. We're looking for a design approach, we're looking for post equals pre for the various storm levels. And so, you know, if there's anything glaring, we would bring that out. We did that. It satisfied our requirements. And I will say that really with the fact that it was being appealed, I thought it would be prudent to go for a second opinion. That's kind of what, I can't say anything different.
Okay. So, yeah, I'm going to have to come back to my thoughts. Council Carl.
I guess, does the, Matt again?
Might as well sit down.
Yeah, just sit in that chair, Matt.
Oh, I was going to do that, to be honest with you.
Does the second opinion change the opinion of staff?
I think what it would do is, I would take the second opinion and work with the applicant to see if those issues could be satisfied, which I'm sure they can be.
Do you want to just pull that microphone a little closer to you?
Sorry, sorry, Matt. That's what I would have done if I, if, again, we saw the second opinion, I would go back with the applicant and say, how can we work through these number of points that we received, and so that the application can proceed.
Council McDonald.
And the application proceeds, it doesn't go back and start over, correct?
No, it's just built on what has been submitted to date.
Okay, what kind of timeline might be involved in going back, asking those questions, and getting to?
So what I would say, probably the applicant will be, will work much faster than the current engineering department can be, but we are getting our resources back up, so it would probably be limited by the engineering department as review, but normally the applicants have been very, very quick with their response, and I wouldn't expect anything different here. So with some focus time on it, probably a couple of weeks that we could go back and have the reports, design, stormwater management plan reviewed and updated.
And Adam, a couple of weeks, is that, how does that affect your timelines or budgets or what kind of impact does that have on your process?
There are still some requests that Nick has required for the next phase, which we're still working on in terms of the actual constructural engineering layout, and I'm still waiting for that phase so that I can submit them back. So I don't really foresee that a couple of weeks is going to.
Okay.
At this, it's 2022. So I think, you know, a couple of weeks So I think, you know, a couple of weeks would be okay. And I just want to clarify one thing in terms of the drainage from my driveway to the brook. I don't want that to be confused with the fact that Phoenix Street Extension is a town street which actually goes down past my property. And so the town plows, for example, will come in and plow Phoenix Street Extension and just push it straight back, and they create huge snowbank, and they, with my permission, so that they don't have to back out into traffic, they have my permission to use my circular driveway so that they can go back out into the street safely. But there's been an issue with some of the rain and the creation of the snowbank at the end of Phoenix Street Extension that is in fact is flooding my property. And I've mentioned it to, lost his name, the engineer that looks after snow removal the streets.
Justin?
Anyway, spoke with him directly, and they came and they removed the snowbank, and they actually did some downgrading. So that was not me that was doing any downgrading or assistance of drainage of water into the said brook that was creating apparent flooding that didn't happen. So that wasn't me. I don't control Phoenix Street Extension, and my driveway does not drain into the brook.
Okay, no, appreciate that clarification. Okay, so I just, I do want to kind of circle back to Counsel McDonald's question, so, so, because I think, and maybe you need to tell me if I'm wrong. So basically what you're saying is, is if there's only a few items on the, if we take the design point recommendation, that there's just a few, couple of things that just need to be updated. I guess basically what you're saying is if we, if we granted the appeal, your question was, does it, does it just mean a couple of tweaks, some conversations with the applicant and engineering fix those, they don't have to resubmit everything and it just keeps going?
Exactly.
Okay, so that's...
How do we move fastest?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're talking about the same thing, so...
Could you repeat that?
So, so...
I was listening, but...
Yeah, so, because, because in my head, what's hanging out over here is, is this, we did get a second opinion from, from an engineering firm that just, that did call it, say there's a few things, just, just a few things that are outstanding. And so just hearing from our engineer that if those were addressed, as the applicant has been quite quick in getting those done, our staff could turn that around hopefully in a couple of weeks if that wouldn't have a, a delay impact. Because I did want to kind of clarify the timelines on that as well.
So just for clarification on that, that would require a resubmission of the storm water management plan that addresses those issues? Yeah, so that, so that has to be made clear too. It's, it's, those changes have to happen on the plan, be resubmitted for your review.
Yep. Counsel Conlon?
Let's just say, for example, we got a third opinion, and they come back and say, yeah, we were fine with the original plan that was submitted. So are we still gonna like go to this second company that gave us the, the issues or like?
Thank you, Counsel Conlon.
I mean, tomatoes, tomatoes. I mean, I'm sure not all engineering firms would look at a storm water management plan the same way with all the different variables. I'm just throwing that in there.
Deputy Mayor Frazier?
Yeah, just to clarify too, and I know where, Adam, you did confirm that you did have a survey done just recently, and I think maybe just for confirmation of, of council or my, myself, staff to just verify, you know, and review the survey, so there's no...
I have that as a PDF file, I can easily mail it to...
Yeah, and that way there, there's no further discrepancy there.
If council grants the appeal on the basis that you feel the storm water management plan requirements or criteria are not satisfied so that there's revisions needed, then staff can take a look at that lot, please? Just to confirm that your survey is, is recent, and as Nick indicated, he feels fairly confident it is, but we could confirm that at that time. If the appeal's not granted, then the approval remains as is unless staff determine that there was a permit or approval issued based on false or misleading information.
Yeah, I would, I would expect that, you know, legally, we can't allow one property order to develop on someone else's property, and so...
That would be the, if, if, as I say, if you don't...
That would be the mechanism.
Yeah, that would be the mechanism then, yeah.
Okay, Counsel McDonald?
So you had, you had said that your review is not exhaustive.
No.
Would it be fair to say that the design points is a little more exhaustive, and that's why it went into future weather events and...
No, I guess the staff have limited time, so the, the, our approach has been traditionally, here and elsewhere where I've worked, is we, we confirm the design philosophy, the general understanding of it. We're looking for those magical words of post equals pre, and it's a stamped engineering report. The designer, regardless of my opinion on the matter, the designer is fully responsible for that design and implementation of it. So that's kind of where we would start and end. And then, again, in this case, I proceeded with a secondary review because of the fact that it was going to appeal.
Okay.
Counsel Thorburn?
Well, we've had some new information. Would it be possible just to defer this for a couple of weeks to check all this out and just come back?
So we can, the one, if you defer it, you'd be deferring it based on wanting to get confirmation of lot lines. Right now, the approval's in place, so this, the approval indicates that the storm water management plan is fine. So any changes to that would be totally voluntary by the applicant, doesn't have to do anything.
Right.
If you, if you don't feel it's met, like, then that's, you grant the appeal, and then they're required in order to get the approval and then their permit to make the modifications to the storm water management plan. So that, that's your, if you feel the storm water management plan's the issue, then it's not deferring, it's granting the appeal, and they make the changes, and then the approval gets, Nick will give the approval, assuming that's the only outstanding issue, and then they'll get their permits.
But that, actually, plan for the lot wasn't brought forward to tonight. We didn't have that information.
Yeah, so if you're not confident in that, then that would be a reason to defer, and then the referral would only be to get confirmation on the lot line if that's not an issue. The other, the other thing to do with that is, is you can deal with the appeal, and if staff determine that a permit's been issued based on false information, then we can revoke a permit as well.
Okay, no, I just wanted some clarification, I didn't know.
Yeah, sorry, yes, Counsel Thorburn, oh, sorry, Counsel Tanner. Yeah, we're gonna...
You're gonna otherwise be insulted? No.
I'm not gonna forget that one for a while.
Matt, this, this second opinion and so on, how do you feel about the, the couple of points they've made? Do you agree with those? Do you support those? Or do you feel that it's a...
What I, what I found out with storm water management itself is certainly an expertise in its own, you know, given that as a municipal engineer, there's a lot of generalities that I have to deal with, but not it. So I do look at though, that firm as having the expertise in that, that's why I went to them. So I think that based on the discussion with, I had a meeting with them, I think on February 26 or around there, about their, their first draft, and then a subsequent draft had to be issued. Again, they, they thought it would be, they could be built upon in terms of the plan. But again, what I don't know is if we were to go back and have the two engineering firms speak to one another, if they can come to agreement or not, because I think Conlon had said it in his, Counsel Conlon, sorry. I'm used to saying last names because of hockey. That, that, there are, there are different ways to deal with storm water management. There's just not one standard practice, or the review would be that much easier. So the, I do recognize that there are differing opinions. So I think that they can be over, the, the few points can be overcome, but it does rely on the, a meeting for, with both the, myself, the, the firm that provided second opinion, the design engineer, and they all have to be willing to have that discussion.
But, okay, but surely as professionals?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
But the only way to have that happen is to grant the appeal.
Correct.
Right. Counsel Conlon, you have a question?
Yeah, so basically, let's say we, we uphold development officer's decision to approve the site plan, and it turns out that we find out that the boundary lines were not accurate, then basically...
Then, then that, then Nick would be able to revoke that permit based on false and misleading information. It's not a great spot to be in, but...
No, and we are, we're going based on, on the applicant having already done the legwork to have an updated survey, so we'll, we'll take him at his word that he has that and would provide it. So if it's, if it's showing that there's no issues with the property line, then there's...
Yeah, yeah, plus I think Nick mentioned that construction is at least 10 meters away from the end of the property line, so...
Something like that, yeah. Are there any more questions for the applicant who was sitting in the chair? Okay, I think, I think we're good with you.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, if council gives one.
Yes, council, okay, if the appellant asks a question? Yeah, if you have a, if you have a question, you can come and ask, do you have a question you wanted to ask, or you're saying?
Well, I do, yes.
So I guess through the mayor and council, a question for the applicant. I've heard about a new survey. I think I've seen a copy of that survey from 2022. Is that, does that sound right? Because if what I looked at is this so-called new survey, it does not indicate where there are any markers, survey pins, or iron bars for the area that's being questioned. And what I looked at looked like whoever created that survey simply drew a line because someone said, oh yeah, that's our property line, it runs parallel to the, the tree line. There's no science behind that part of the survey. And so I raised this, not really knowing what's going on here, but I don't want you to be baffled by bullshit. Okay? Well, okay, I apologize for that term, but you also have to understand, I sat back there and heard my character being torn apart through lies and misinformation by the applicant. And I really hope what he said was documented so I can take action over what he, he said. And I was very upset about being misrepresented through misinformation. So right now, I'm of the opinion that this whole issue is a mess, and I still believe that for council, the prudent thing to do is say, stop, go back to the drawing board and get your act together. Because right now, to proceed with false information, lies from the applicant about me, my property, before you tonight, how can you make a good decision? The only decision should be to deny the, the applicant's request and tell him to go back to the drawing board, and this time, he should talk to his neighbors. I am pro-business, but I'm also pro-resident, and I believe you are as well. And as a resident, a member of this community, I matter, so do my other neighbors, and I want you to take our concerns into consideration. I would like the applicant to take our concerns into consideration because we're not nuts. I am very willing to work with him and his engineers to come up with a reasonable, fair plan that will help try to make everyone happy without spending $100,000. But I need you to recognize that, as I said, right now, we've got a mess, and to proceed and allow him to start construction and going ahead with a storm water management plan that has been questioned not only by me, but obviously another engineer, would not be prudent.
That's it, thank you.
And so I think we've, we've sufficiently addressed the, the property line issue with, staff can verify the survey if they, if they feel that there's a question. If there's anything that is not correct, then that is a mechanism to obviously pull back any, if council wishes to uphold the, the, the development officer's recommendation, then that can change based on if there's anything, as CAO said, false information or misleading in terms of that. So that's, sounds reasonable to get confirmation. The applicant has said that he has a recent survey, the appellant has said he has a survey. I'm sure we can get to the bottom of that, but I think council, council understands that that, that can be pulled out as, as something separate, there is a mechanism there. So, yeah, so that's, let's go back to the original reason we were here, and that is, does post equal pre?
Storm water management.
For storm water management, that is why we were here. Counsel Thorburn?
Yeah, I, I agree with Counsel Conlon. We can get more engineers, and every engineer's gonna have a different opinion because it's really a new field, and, and we're getting storms that we never got before. So they don't know what we decide tonight could be completely wrong, or it could be completely right. But all the proper information was presented to us and approved by a legal engineering form, so I'm with Mike. I think we should approve the recommendation.
Are there any other questions from council, questions of staff?
Just a comment, I guess. If council decides to grant the appeal, I would encourage the applicant to continue with the process and hopefully resolve this in a timely manner.
Yeah, I don't think the applicant's going to be stopping anytime soon. He doesn't, he doesn't need to, as you said, you have a year to be out at the Phoenix Street location so that the, the project will forge ahead. I just want to make sure council has asked all the questions that it wishes to ask, has all the information that it needs. Okay? Anything you wanted to add? Did you want a cough drop?
I'm gonna get one in a minute.
That's good, I, I need online. I have, I have lollipops, though. I still have Counsel Thorburn's lollipops from three years ago. I'm sure those are still good. Okay, is, is someone prepared to make a motion? Counsel Conlon?
I'll make a motion, your worship. I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of staff and uphold the development officer's decision to approve the site plan application for 35 York Street in accordance with the Municipal Government Act, Section 232, subsection 3.
Do I have second, or Counsel Thorburn, for the discussion?
Question?
Question is being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Okay. Everyone understands? Okay. So again, staff will make sure lot lines and other things are correct?
Yeah.
Okay, I appreciate everyone's time and discussion. All right, we will move on to Planning Area 6.2, request for easement 450 La Haye Street.
Okay, thank you. Staff received a letter from the So Short Center on October 27, 2023, requesting a 20-foot wide easement for access across town own property. This isn't the first time this request has been made, same request was made a few years ago, however, it didn't progress. Now the So Short Center is back and eager to, eager to make an agreement.
Can we pull that microphone back up? No, pull it up towards you, that's probably... There we go.
Yeah, so the SoShore Center is back, and then so here we are tonight. The easement would accommodate a service vehicle travel area around 450 La Havre Street, supplies the building with Value Village, Bolt Burn, CIBC, Pet Value, CR Optometers, Alliance Dental. The access road would be located next to the Porta Crescent walkway as it wraps around the building, and would necessitate the loss of two or more parking spaces there adjacent to the CIBC. So staff have compiled a list of what would be required in order to move forward with registering an easement in favor of 450 La Havre Street. The SoShore Center has agreed to the following terms: a one-way traffic design, that's just because of the space allotted there, or available there, screening and buffering, or buffering between the walkway and the access road, and retaining wall or safety fencing should the design warrant, and possible adjustments to the town's existing sanitary and storm sewer manholes that are in that same location. So that would be through a set of drawings produced by a professional engineer licensed to practice in Nova Scotia. Further, the town's existing sanitary and storm sewer infrastructure in the same area should be reported in an easement as well for ownership purposes, so that would form part of the discussion, as well as the operations of that internal intersection nearby the access road location, already a difficult spot in between Tim Hortons, DQ, and CIBC. So to introduce a new access road, service vehicles only, just causes the need to take a look. That's privately owned, internal street system. Staff would receive and review the design as prepared by an engineer. If satisfactory, an easement agreement for access can be drafted by the applicant's legal counsel and then executed. Therefore, staff are seeking direction from counsel to execute an easement agreement to allow access and access road encroachment, subject to satisfactory completion of the conditions as outlined. I'll take any questions.
Counsel McDonald?
The pedestrian trail there, that remains intact, correct?
Yes, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Counsel Tanner?
And I'm sure I'm clear, but it's for exit only. Truck is not going to be backing in there.
It's for one-way travel, and so probably exit only, but it could be in and out the other side. So there is an access around the back of that building on the far end, the opposite end of the building today. So which way that direction of traffic goes, I'm not sure. But with the wraparound access, that is, I'm not sure which way the traffic would go. But I would assume we would come in the opposite side and come out.
Yeah, I guess my concern is if you've got a transport truck of that size trying to back in that area, then we could have a whole other issue potentially, but, okay.
Yeah, and there's been some talk of just ensuring there is a turnaround area back there. There is some space back there next to the loading docks that they want to access. So again, a set of drawings, and that's an important piece, so thank you.
My concern is just similar. We've got the walking trails heavily used. You could have a vehicle coming out. I know you said safety fencing and things like that, separating pedestrian on the trail from vehicle. Is there a mechanism for us to make sure that safety fencing doesn't look awful?
Yeah, well...
Like, I'd love to not see an ugly chain link fence there. If it's going to be, safety fencing can at least kind of look aesthetically pleasing to the trail, not to the truck.
Yeah, staff agree. There's some existing picket fencing up along Porta Crescent now. That's actually recently been fixed by the SoShore Center after some time. But it's, so something like a continuation of that, something aesthetically pleasing would be what staff would look for cheating.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So just on those lines, I hate to ask, but, you know, is there any opportunity to actually plant some large-sized trees there? Possibly. Space, so we'd have to see what we're working with. But, yeah, I mentioned screening, buffering, so that's the idea there, is to actually separate, you know, provide some delineation of those two spaces, vehicles, pedestrians. The whole idea of like safety fencing, that really comes about if a retaining wall is necessitated by the design, which it may be a little bit further back as the grades change a little bit. But the primary concern there is separating spaces, and ideally done through vegetation.
Counsel McDonald?
I'm sorry if I missed this in here, but is there any opportunity to enhance the safety of active transportation there? Because when you come out into that very kind of congested little area, and I grew up in Glen Allen, so I came through that path a lot, the traffic is kind of paying attention to each other, and the people crossing are not necessarily the full focus when trying to navigate that area. Is there an opportunity here?
There is, and that's why I talk more so about the operations of that internal intersection, but that's part of AT is certainly part of that discussion. So, yeah, when you come out now, you come out to parking spaces, and you can kind of get in behind them, and then on the walkway in front of CIBC. But then there's no way to safely cross over to the sidewalk next to Tim Hortons. But people generally just walk through the parking spaces and into the DQ parking lot, and you have to drive through there. So there are some concerns, and AT would be, you know, strongly considered and a real part of those discussions. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Somebody prepared to make a motion, Deputy Mayor, thank you.
Yes, I'll make one. I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater give conditional approval of a grant of easement in favor of SoShore Center at 450 La Havre Street for a 20-foot-wide easement across town-owned property, Pid 64379, for execution by the mayor and municipal clerk on behalf of the town, subject to the satisfactory completion of the conditions as outlined in Document 24-045.
Thank you. Seconded by Counsel Tanner, further discussion?
Question.
Your non-alaws in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried, thank you. Request for grading bylaw.
We're actually going to have Nikita present this this evening. Am I going to stick around, if that's all right?
Yep.
And just kind of hang out here?
Perfect.
Mostly for questions if need be.
Hi, hello everyone, good evening. Good evening to all of you present here and the general public. My name is Nikita, as Nick mentioned, and I'm the Parks and Planning Project Assistant for the town. Unfortunately, Sana couldn't be here with us today, and she works as Planner One for the town. Now, while we're here today, and what are we hoping to try and address today? It highlights a very pressing concern that Bridgewater is currently facing, which basically highlights overland or pluvial flooding. We heard a little bit about it in some of the discussions here before, and the purpose today is to try to educate Town Council on lot-grading, site alteration, and low-impact development and design techniques, also shortfonded LIDD through the presentation. We are also hoping to wish to seek direction today on whether Town Council wishes to pursue this agenda further. Just to give a little introduction, the image you see here in front of you is through the Metropolitan Planning Council. It very distinctly highlights urban flooding due to intense rainfall and overwhelmed systems. Now, we at Bridgewater are not new to urban flooding, especially because of the flash floods that happened in Bridgewater just in spring 2023. And when we try to think about it from a wider perspective, when grassy or forested land is overlaid with concrete houses and roads, where is all the excess of water going to go? The drains, swales, ditches present on the side of roads only help so much. So council members, the mayor, CEO, all of you are very accustomed to hearing complaints all the time of properties flooding or municipal structures flooding, and are also very familiar with the recurring nature of such grievances. And one of council's strategic priorities revolves around mitigating flood risks across town, and it's also very important to consider additional mitigation factors that can preemptively help to resolve such flood risks happening in the future. One strategy that we have been looking into is separated stormwater and wastewater around town, and it's very much needed, but I urge you to consider, wouldn't it be even more beneficial if we could manage rainwater and stormwater at the origin? Just to get into a little bit of definitions of lot-grading, site alteration, and low-impact development and design guidelines. This report that you might have in front of you right now, and this presentation, stems as a response to the concerns that have been voiced in our community regarding flooding incidents. This is a topic that staff is very deeply passionate about. And just to get into them a little bit, lot-grading basically refers to the physical alteration of a piece of land, also called lot, which may include the addition or removal of topsoil trees or any other materials naturally existing on the lot. I myself, when I started research, I thought lot referred to parking lot, so I just wanted to make it show for the public that what lot means is a piece of land here. Site alteration refers to and includes, but is also not limited to, removal or addition of topsoil, changes in the natural topography of land, placing fill, clearing, grubbing, compaction of soil, creation of any impervious surfaces, cutting or removal of trees or natural vegetation, or any combination of these activities. Low-impact development and design, on the other hand, is a very environmentally friendly approach to development, seeking to imitate the natural water cycle by effectively controlling the flow of rainwater at its origin. Now, LIDD can also be introduced as an alternative safe design strategy that uses natural and engineered infiltration and storage techniques, and it encompasses a range of small, cost-efficient tools and techniques designed to address stormwater issues. The visual you see in front of you here is a visual depiction of a proper lot-grading lot using low-impact development and design techniques. We see a house in the middle of the lot, which is a little bit of a higher elevation to the ground compared to the rest of the land around it, and implementing environmentally friendly swales in a way that they're able to safely guide the stormwater or rainwater into a surrounding ditch or into a drainage system, so it doesn't impact the property itself or any properties that are around that. Going into some examples from Bridgewater itself, there are two instances that I'm going to discuss that came in as complaints to staff. The pictures that you're going to see have been cropped or blurred to maintain the privacy of the residents. This is one example, so there's three pictures around here. We have House One and House Two. In the very first picture, we have House One on the left-hand side, House Two on the right-hand side. And on the second picture, it is a little bit visible that House Two and House One are kind of on a sloping hill, and House One is on a lower land elevation compared to House Two. Now, when House Two decided to regrade their lot as part of some redesigning around the house, they decided to grade their lot in a way that House One didn't like. And staff received a complaint from House One about the grading that House Two had undergone. Staff subsequently inquired with the builders of House Two regarding if they have any plans for implementing bioswales or any other design techniques that would help alleviate the pressure of any rainwater or stormwater flowing. House Two only said that they have a plan to use the retaining wall using the boulders that you see in the first picture. And while sympathetic to the situation, staff explained that as per the existing bylaws that we have at the town right now, there are no provisions that prevent House Two from regrading their lot as it is. According to the Building Code and the use of foundation drainage systems, House Two is only required to ensure that water is being directed away from the building foundation itself, but not necessarily where the water is supposed to go. Now, during a period of intense rainfall, it compromised the integrity of the backyard of House One severely. As you can see in the third picture, they underwent a lot of flooding on their own properties, and it was dangerously encroaching upon the foundation of their own building. Now, if, for example, in this situation, we had a bylaw that mandated that lot owners have to submit a lot-grading or site-alteration permit prior to any kind of development, town staff would have a more wider perspective of the area, and they could ensure the overall protection of the area, helping mitigate the risk of flooding for all the lots and not just one specific one. Furthermore, staff also recognizes that not all landowners necessarily might have the resources to engage professional services for lot-grading or to explore environmentally friendly techniques. Therefore, the proposal of low-impact development and design guidelines aims to provide that all lot owners with accessible, comprehensive guidance on environmentally sustainable and low-impact development practices can be tailored to their specific lots. Is it okay if I drink some water?
Of course.
I'm feeling a bit nervous here. Okay. Here we have another instance from the town of Bridgewater, between a dispute between House One and House Two again. So if you can see in the picture on the top right-hand corner, we have House One on the right side, House Two on the left side. Both of their lots are graded in a way that water that flows into their backyard is going to pool in the middle, where you see that gravelly structure. Now, when this was happening, House One, you believe it or not, if you see the big tree in the back, the property line is right there, even if they install that red structure beside the gravelly bed. So after the water kept, after the water was, after the lot was graded in that way, water kept pooling in the middle of their two backyards. So House One, seeing it as if it was their land, decided to install a French drain in that specific area. Now, French drain is also explained in this little image on the side. It's a gravel-covered infiltration trench which has a pipe underneath. Now, French drain is one way to manage water, but in this case, it had a very negative effect, because French drains are supposed to be installed downhill to facilitate gravity-assisted drainage and prevent excess moisture accumulating in the yards. Alternatively, the effectiveness of drainage system like French drains could potentially be enhanced by pairing them with bioswales specifically designed for linear surfaces or offer improved water management solutions. In this case, the negative impact of French drain was that the water, because of all the pooling, started flowing into the front yard of these houses, as you see in the lower right-hand side corner of the picture, and it eroded a big portion of land between House One and House Two, hence staff received the complaint. Now, these examples that we just saw just help us focus on the importance of proper lot-grading, site alteration, and low-impact development and design techniques. Just to go through these a little bit, it tries to ensure positive drainage can be achieved on individual lots. It helps facilitate groundwater recharge, stormwater management, and it's also sustainable in the long term. It helps to preserve municipal infrastructure and workforce efficiency, especially where storm and sanitary water are collected in the same pipe right now. LIDD can help reduce even the amount of stormwater that enters our systems, and it would help relieve the pressure of our systems. In safeguarding private properties, it will help manage water on each property and the community as a whole, and provide residents peace of mind and sense of security. It will help mitigate adverse effects on any neighboring lots. The current strategies only ensure, like I said, that water is directed away from the building foundation, but it doesn't necessarily say if the water can be flowed into a neighboring property or too much on the street. And it doesn't cover the sheeting or overland flow that causes flooding concerns from one neighbor to the other, and staff received many complaints stemming from improper surface water management. It is definitely very environmentally sustainable. It's not very sustainable for our staff to keep feeling complaints as they come and thinking in a more long-term perspective. It helps fully capitalize on the economic, environment, and social benefit of forested and urban lands, and it would help Bridgewater to adapt to climate change, and long-term, it is more sustainable to pre-mitigate these future risks. Elaborating some more on the important side, Nova Scotia is facing shifting precipitation patterns and increased flood risks due to climate change. A recent study by Environment and Climate Change Canada, Canada, messing up my words, Canada projected that warmer temperatures are causing less snowfall, more rain, and intense rainfall events. These changes contribute to higher flood risk, erosion, and humidity levels, and it's important to revamp municipal and regional planning strategies to accommodate these new challenges. and it's important to revamp municipal and regional planning strategies to accommodate these new challenges. Now, in light of all these points, staff are anticipating that the inclusion of LIDD techniques with the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw is a promising mitigation effort to control and reduce rainwater runoff. What we currently have at the town of Bridgewater, we have developments that are regulated through site plan approval, development agreement, concept subdivision planning, and they have currently robust controls under the town's municipal planning strategy, land use bylaw, and subdivision bylaw. For all the other developments, or what we consider as a fright, the existing practices at TOB primarily focus only on ensuring the water is directed away from the building foundations, a requirement enforced through compliance with building code and the use of foundation drainage system. Now, across Canada, municipalities have responded to water-related environmental challenges and flooding risks with regulations aimed at lot grading or site alteration. They've taken many different approaches with some integrating guidelines into existing building or development bylaws, while some choose to establish a whole different lot grading, site alteration policies. Regardless of the method, everyone's aim is to minimize the impact on both private and public environment and infrastructure. The concerns that we currently are focusing at the town, we have concerns around development of new and upcoming residential building lots. And even though TOB has existing policies and design standards to mandate proper lot grading, they do not fully capture the most typical of development, particularly those falling under as-of-right processes without conditions. The town lacks specific bylaws or guidelines that comprehensively guide developers and professionals in ensuring proper lot grading, development, site alteration practices for such common development scenarios. So, the wider question that we have to ask ourselves is, where will the extra water go? If it goes into the municipal systems, it overwhelms our systems. If it goes into private properties, it affects the foundation of the buildings. But if it goes into neighboring properties, we get a lot of complaints. What staff is suggesting at this time is a lot grading and/or a site alteration bylaw paired with necessary LIDD guidelines is needed to ensure that new and as-of-right developments can be regulated before the issue of surface water management worsens. A little bit into what low-impact development and design techniques would hopefully include. It is an environmentally friendly approach. It helps to imitate the natural water cycle by controlling rainwater at its origin. It's an alternative design strategy that uses natural and engineered infiltration. It uses design techniques that allow for absorption, filtration, evaporation, and storage of rainwater. And it maintains the water balance on a site and reduces the detrimental effects that traditional end-of-pipe system have on waterways. I'll briefly explain a couple of those, and then very briefly tell about the other ones. The first one, bioretention cell. It's an engineered natural treatment system which is designed to filter and retain runoff, effectively removing pollutants, fostering groundwater recharge, and preventing stagnant water. So, in the case where we had the French drain, if a bioretention cell was instead installed in that particular place, it would have helped to mitigate stormwater in a much better way. A vegetated or grassed swale. It helps to incorporate dense vegetation strategically positioned downstream of impervious surfaces to capture and filter the initial surge of runoff. Permeable pavements. This could be maybe a new and upcoming strategy of town for parking lots or municipal infrastructure or municipal buildings. A permeable material is a highly cost, is a highly effective means to stabilize the hydraulic congestion of the site. It helps to soak the groundwater into the ground, even though there's a permeable, impermeable surface present. And a very important one, lot grading, is also a part of LIDD techniques. It is a very prime example of low-impact development and design techniques, and it helps the reshaping and resloping of land in such a way that surface drainage from rain can be controlled. If you see in the visual on the upper right-hand side, it is an example of split drainage to rare yard swale achieved through proper lot grading. So, proper lot grading done on one particular lot helps alleviate the pressure of rainwater from that lot, while if it's done on a more, in a whole community as a whole, it would help alleviate the pressure of stormwater, our stormwater systems, and help no flooding of neighboring properties or their own private properties in the whole community. These are a couple more examples of LIDD techniques. We have tree box filters, disconnected dump spouts. We have detention tanks that could be installed under different properties. We have external rain barrels that could be collecting extra stormwater that is coming from the roofs. We have soap pits. We have soil amendments and aeration. We have retention tanks that are above the ground. And then we have green and blue roofs, which look very pretty and also help to manage stormwater. What staff is hoping that the bylaw would be able to include is that all lots that would require alteration or grading for any or all purposes to obtain a permit. Help mandate that town staffs can oversee and ensure the safeguard, the safeguarding of private properties, municipal infrastructure, and environmental sustainability. It would ensure that an application for lot grading or site alteration permit includes a lot grading or site alteration plan, a proposal illustrating drainage and patterns, and depictions of surface and stormwater flows, a grading or alteration plan to include principles of LIDD prepared by a professional engineer, professional architect, or Nova Scotia land surveyor. Some recommendations that we hope to put in front of council today is that staff recommend that council direct staff to begin work on a bylaw with respect to lot grading and site alteration. And staff recommend that council direct staff to create guidelines for public education with respect to low-impact development and design practices. Some implications that it would have at the town here, some financial implications. The bylaw implementation may have a financial impact as it relates to staffing resources. The creation of the bylaw itself would be undertaken during staff time with no additional resources required. An LIDD guideline can be created by staff and/or with the time from a consultant for design services contingent upon budget availability. Some strategic priorities and work program implications. The land use and development control is a core function of the community development department. The inflow and infiltration of stormwater into wastewater structure is a current work priority, and the mitigation of flooding risk is a strategic priority. The options that you have on your reports and that we are hoping to present to council: direct staff to work on a lot grading and/or site alteration bylaw and low-impact development and design guidelines; direct staff to work on only a lot grading and/or site alteration bylaw; direct staff to work on only a low-impact development and design guidelines workbook; direct staff to report back with more information on the subject matter; or lastly, direct staff to refrain from working on lot grading and/or alteration bylaw and LIDD guidelines at this time. Questions?
You did great.
Glad you're speaking.
Yeah, you did great. That was good. There's a lot of information in there, so. Appreciate you kind of stepping up and filling in for staff. Questions from council?
Counsel Tanner.
Great presentation, Nikita, but I assume we're not the first municipality to create LIDD guidelines and so on. So, how do you approach that? Do you beg, borrow, and steal from others who've done it and cobble it together and massage it for town of Bridgewater?
We are definitely not the first municipality that's looking into lot grading or site alteration bylaws, but I think I would defer Nick to answer for the LIDD, for the LIDD guidelines.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of best practice out there with respect to low-impact development and, and design. I, I know Sanna, our planner, has been working on this, and she's collected a lot of resources and a lot of information. And there are municipalities, I don't know the names, I don't know exactly which, but I have looked at a few examples where those guidelines do exist as encouragements mostly, and sometimes more, sometimes paired with incentive programs. Yeah, so there, there is some good work out there. Low-impact design is, is, is a big topic and an important one.
We wouldn't be reinventing the wheel, that's for sure.
Yeah, yeah.
I know, I know, a lot of us are getting, probably all of us are getting increased number of, of calls from residents just because weather events are more, right? Like that one-in-ten-year storm seems to be, I mean, what day is it today? Here we go again, kind of thing. And I think coming out of COVID, one of the things that people did was they, they took maybe the money they were normally using for vacations and reinvesting it into their own properties. And some of that is landscaping, and a lot of folks, unfortunately, I'm gonna, I'm gonna really hope that they did it unknowingly, redirected water to their neighbor's property. And so, right now, and you, you said this right off the bat, Nikita, at the beginning, is that we don't have a mechanism, a bylaw, that prevents that, right? So, but just for clarification, the building code requires that the water essentially flow away from the house. But you fast forward 10 or 15 years, and houses settle, people then do landscaping and remote, that's, that's what we're talking about here.
It could be now, at the point of development as well. So, yeah, the building code requires that you, there's surface, sorry, tile drainage around the foundation as well, but the idea being to direct the surface water away from, from the foundation. But aside from that, at the point of development, for as-of-right development, that water can then be directed wherever the builder wants to direct it, and sometimes that may be just into the backyard, and then it, it's there and it settles there. We have those situations around town. Or it's off to the sides or through the back, or sheeting across the front, which impacts the town systems, and the others impacting the adjacent properties, of course. So, yeah, there's a, I believe, a, a bit of a gap in, in just the management of, of surface water. Site plan approval process has that as a, as a criteria to be adhered to in development agreements and so on, but it's the, it's the average house on a, on a, on a, on a building lot around town that, that you're getting permits and building. And that's where there, there's a lack of mechanism.
Did you, sorry, Counsel Conklin. I was just gonna say Conklin.
Okay, I really like this idea, and a couple of concerns. One, staffing, capacity issue, you know, creating the bylaws. And then actually, it'll be the enforcement of them going forward. And also, I guess, what we'd be looking at, one of the suggestions, a grading plan to include principles of LIDD prepared by a professional engineer, professional architect, or, or a land surveyor. So, I, I guess, you know, one concern would be an added cost, especially for like the average home just doing some average landscaping, but I'm sure that will get addressed in the bylaws. I'm, I'm hoping that, like, just the most minimal type of landscaping that you do to your property wouldn't require a, you know, an extra cost as far as a surveyor or architect or engineer recommendation, but.
Yeah, in, in regards to your first question, which is extra staffing resources, we did put, we did realize it a little bit later and did put another point into the financial budget implication. It would be that the implementation of the grading bylaw necessitates the allocation of resources for submission, review, and monitoring, with the recognition that monitoring activities may predominantly arise from received complaints, potentially placing a demand on engineering resources. However, it is anticipated that the primary inspection duties would be vested in the development officer, supplemented by engineer support as required. So, while there may be some kind of additional staffing resources that are required, I couldn't exactly promise, but the amount of time that staff spends on complaints right now would probably be much lessened and could be allocated towards pre-development of these properties. Regarding to the second question, I'm not sure I'm the best person to answer.
Yes, there would be an additional cost to the, to the developer, to the builder, to the property owner, whomever is carrying those costs, because they would have to retain the services of a professional, and that would need to be figured out. You know, we included, Nikita included, land surveyor and, and some of those other professions. I'm not sure if it would be anything, anyone else other than, than a professional engineer. So, there is an additional cost to the, to the applicant. And just building off of the first part and Nikita's answer, there would be time, you know. There, any, anytime you introduce, council introduces a new bylaw, there is, there's staff time that needs to go into review, monitoring, enforcement. And that would, would be a combination of engineering department and community development department staff. So, there would be time needed from the engineering department, specifically with the review of plans, and then advice as, as through monitoring and enforcement. But, and it's, it's very preliminary, but the thought being that, that administration would be that a duty of the development officer. And, and that's, that's extra time for, for that position as well. But we do have two development officers at the town now, so.
Yeah, so that, that was actually gonna be my, my comment is, is the concern about developing a bylaw without ensuring that there's an understanding of the resources that are required to enforce it. Because it, there'd be nothing worse than having a bylaw that we don't enforce. So, I would suggest that it, it would be accompanied by an implementation plan that would include what resources would be required to do that. Because to say it's additional engineering time or additional development officer time, that means it's, we're, we're all at capacity right now. So, it means something's either slowing down or we're adding resources to our staff complement in order to get that done. It is an important bylaw, and Nikita's right, there's a lot of time spent fielding complaints, especially this summer. A lot of time was spent by staff trying to investigate sites, and we didn't have a real good tool to do anything but make suggestions. So, it's necessary. It's just gonna come with a cost in order to implement it.
This is definitely not going to lessen the amount of complaints that are going to come this year or next year, or even a few years, but, but in a more long-term perspective, I guess it would help staff and the public to, and also neighbors having good friendly relations, not flooding each other's properties.
Any further? I would like a motion, please.
I move the town council for the town of Bridgewater to direct staff to, one, begin working on a lot grading and site alteration bylaw, and two, to create associated guidelines with respect, with respect to low-impact development and design, LIDD practices, for the migrate, for the mitigation of flood risk to properties within the town of Bridgewater.
Thank you, sir. Deputy Mayor Pujer, further discussion? None, all is in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Yeah, great information, and I will, I'll remind the public that everything that we have in our council package is available for the public on the town's website, so you can download that information and reach out to staff if you have any questions regarding that. Yeah, but I think that's a big one that we need to move forward on, so. I know, and you're right, something, something we'll have to give, but I'm sure we can find something I can give. Okay, 6.4, Energy Poverty Task Force update.
This is a report for information that the province with Nova Scotia Power, the province endorsed a Nova Scotia Power-led task force on energy poverty reduction. It was struck last fall, and through some of the work and some of the connections with Energize Bridgewater, Energize Bridgewater was invited to join it later in the fall, so around Christmas. And so, we have been sitting on that. There has been a survey done. There is some work. The, there is an update, and I believe the, the work that was discussed in this is not going to progress with that US expert to provide. The funding was not provided to engage that US expert, but the results of the survey that was done province-wide around energy poverty, those results are just in the process of being distributed. So, this was really just an information report to say that there's this energy poverty task force that was created, and Energize Bridgewater has since joined that task force to provide some of the information and learning that we're doing through our Energize Bridgewater project on energy poverty reduction. So, we have added a different lens. We've been sharing our resources, the research findings from our partnership with McGill University, and we'll continue to participate in this and bring the work that we're doing here in town to the broader provincial picture. and bring the work that we're doing here in town to the broader provincial picture entirely. I'm a bit uncertain in terms of where the next steps are now that that, there hasn't been a, a recent meeting that we've attended, so I'm not sure where they're going with the results of the survey that they've just received or how those will be shared out.
Well, I'm, I'm glad to hear Energize Bridgewater was eventually invited to, I was a little bit struggling with how you have an Energy Poverty Task Force that didn't initially start with Energize Bridgewater, but there's a lot of big players at the table, so glad that, glad they were part of it, because very few municipalities can bring the perspective that Energize Bridgewater can through all our data and experiences that we've built up in our communities. So hats off to staff for getting to the table and sticking around the table and.
Inviting ourselves to the table perhaps, but what it did highlight for us, which I think is just an important thing to note, is that we had deep connections and relationships with a number of the, the partners around that table that kind of fell off through COVID and through the time where we were really focused internally on trying to get the program up and running and really sort of refine what Energize Bridgewater was. And in doing so, we lost touch with some of those early partners, and so we're really engaging right now in reconnecting with those early partners. So like the Affordable Energy Coalition, you know, we had been working with them as part of our application, we haven't worked with them until now. We're re-engaging with some of those now that were on this task force, so.
That's great. Good news.
A bit of a miss.
Any questions from councilmen? Did you see the, I know this is, this is on topic, but did you see the article? So we know in our community, you know, around 40% of people live in energy poverty. Did you see the article last week talking about the energy poverty rates in Cape Breton?
They are astounding, absolutely.
Like over 60%?
Yeah.
Yeah, so just, I mean, we looked at 40% in shock, and I've spoken to municipal leaders from every municipality saying, if you think you're less, you're wrong, but never in my wildest dreams did I think that there would be a municipality that was over 50%, let alone over 60%. So again, credit where credit is due, having an Energy Poverty Task Force in the province, so I'm glad we're at the table. Thank you to your team. We have a couple of correspondence for information items. We have a letter from the Province of Nova Scotia regarding the coastal action plan, so that is there, and again, the public can read that. Letter is, is part of our correspondence and part of our agenda package, so that was in the news quite a bit last week, so.
In this week.
Yeah.
We'll continue.
Yeah, and then we have a letter from St. Vincent de Paul, who are also part of the Energy Poverty Task Force I saw in the memo, so most people are aware of the work that they do, but important to note that, you know, in 2022, they assisted over 650 individuals, and in 2023, that number grew to over 800 individuals, so we know St. Vincent de Paul does a lot of great work in the, in the community, so thank you to all their volunteers and the town's continued support. We're down to correspondence for action. 8.1, Requesting United Way for 10,000 Free Transit Passes. So this is not a new request, I mean, it's a new request for this year, but they have made this request in the past.
So it's for the, they're requesting 10,000 free passes for the 2425 fiscal year, and if council remembers, they had originally, I believe, they came in in two increments last year asking for 10,000 in total, which was granted to them. So they're suggesting that the need is still there. I can say that not all full 10,000 get redeemed, so it, it's an opportunity, they, they, they give them to clients and they may or may not redeem them.
Let's hear it. Sure.
Nick, I think, I think it was 6,000, and we just increased it another four a few months ago, and I did make that motion, so I'd be happy to make this one tonight. The town council for the Town of Bridgewater agreed to provide a total of 10,000 free passes equal to the total number of passes in the 202324 to the Lumberg County United Way Free Transit Pass Program for the fiscal year 20242025.
Do I have a second, or Councilor McDonald? Discussion?
Question?
Question, yeah. Question being called, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Yeah, so lots of use for transit, and I should have started with the announcements that transit is free this week for students and youth to get to all the events, and I also forgot, we have Talk Bridgewater on Wednesday, so we're in that, we're in the mall in the afternoon, and we're at the LCL in the evening, and I'm gonna be, I think we're 1:00 to 4:00 at the mall, but I'm gonna be on the bus from like 10:00 after 12:00 to 10:00 after 1:00, doing a lap, if anyone wants to join me, talking to our, our bus family. I didn't know what to call them on my social media posts, because they're not like clients, they're not bus riders, they're not even bus passengers, they're like bus family. That's how the drivers refer to them, so I'll be on the bus, and I'm hoping, because normally when the bus is free, it gets full, so I'm hoping that it is crowded, so anyway. Don't forget, Talk Bridgewater. We are down to reports and recommendations, so we have Lumberg County Senior Safety Program report for February 2024, that's there for your information, still a continued need there. And then we have Parks, Recreation, and Culture Advisory Committee, citizen representatives. Is someone prepared to make a motion, Councilor McDonald? Thank you.
I move that town council for the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Parks, Recreation, and Culture Advisory Committee and appoint Sebastian Sanchez as a citizen member to the committee effective immediately for a three-year term ending on March 31st, 2027.
Thank you. Second to by Deputy Mayor Fager, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. 9.3 is our briefing session notes. We had a very engaging and lively session last week talking about tourism, so Donna Hat led that. A lot of information, a lot of things to think about, so council's going to continue to have that discussion. People may read that and say tourism of Bridgewater, but as, as Donna very clearly articulated, there is a lot of tourism happening in the Town of Bridgewater, hotel nights, and there's a lot of potential as well for our community, but we have to make sure we do that the right way. So again, that'll come back for further discussion from council and then eventually a decision on some direction going forward, but that's all in your discussion notes. And then we are down to new business and an item for our alternative procurement. I don't know if he's gonna quick touch on that. I'm trying to make it seem like I don't have to talk too much. I see Donna ran out.
That's okay.
Did you run to the store to get her fisherman's friend, like?
So council has been presented with a funding opportunity, the details of which remain in camera, but this funding opportunity would enable us to participate in a feasibility study, and that would look at us doing a Clean Fuel Feasibility and Opportunity Assessment framework for the Town of Bridgewater. It does require that we make a commitment of 22,500 in cash and in-kind contribution of 15,000, so one part of the motion is asking for council's endorsement of that. And the second is, is that there would be a sole source to Clean Foundation to undertake this assessment, and I believe the amount is approximately $135,000 for them to do that work, and per your purchasing policy, you are able to approve alternative or alternate procurement when we're looking at contracting with a public or nonprofit organization of which this is, and where time is of essence, and going to public market may compromise the ability to complete the project of which this is as well.
All right. Thank you. Is someone prepared to make a motion?
Can I have a question?
Yes, you can, absolutely.
I was just looking at that, is that probably going to be in the 2425 budget, not the 2324 budget?
Our expenses will be in the 2425. I'm uncertain about whether or not the revenue will be in the 2324 or 2425, but we'll carry the revenue over if it comes to fiscal.
So once we approve this tonight, it's already approved in the budget and for 2425?
There'll be offsetting, the 22500 will be yes.
Yeah, just wanted to make that clear.
And there'll be offsetting revenue for all, any expense above that.
Okay, so are you ready for the motion?
I am, sir, yes.
All right, she answered my question. I've moved that town council for the Town of Bridgewater authorize the CAO to execute the funding agreement discussed in camera, which includes an allocation of $22,500 from the economic development budget and staff in-kind estimated at $15,000, and that the CAO be authorized to use an alternate procurement per Section 18 of Policy 79, purchasing and tendering policy, to approve the contract between the Town of Bridgewater and Clean Foundation to undertake a Clean Fuel Feasibility and Opportunity Assessment framework.
Second to by everyone on this side. Councilor Tanner, I saw you had it first. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. Thus ends the lesson, we are at the end of the agenda, and can I have a motion to adjourn? Deputy Mayor Fager, that was super quick, you're ready to go. Second to by Councilor Callahan, we are adjourned, thank you.